Hey Joe, it looks like your mobile number is still signed in for this meeting.
If you can't be talking to yourself. Can you hear me honey? Please, please.
Hey Joe, it looks like your mobile number is still signed in for this meeting. Hey Joe, it looks like your mobile number is still signed in for this meeting. Ray?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
And to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And John, could you do the roll call?
Yes, Mayor Fell. Trustee Farino.
Here.
Trustee Mackin.
Here.
Trustee Rosenberg.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Joseph Gagliano.
Delighted to be here as usual, very thankful. I'm here.
Mayor Fell.
Yes, I'm here also. Thank you.
All present, thank you Mayor Fell.
Great. We have two village employees with us, John, of course, the village clerk and Ally McCabe, our treasurer. And Ally, would you start the meeting with the treasurer's update?
Sure. So I wanted to start off with a review of our revenue and expenses through April 30th. I've taken a look at our preliminary numbers. I'll be sending out the treasurer's reports to all of you later in the week after the bank reconciliations for April are completed. I'll start with the expense side of the general fund. At this point in time, at the end of April, our total expenses stand at about 3.9 million of our $4.5 million budget for the 1920 year. So looking through all of the expense accounts and we have about, you know, if we were going to meet the total expense budget, there's still about 600,000 left. Ray, John and I have discussed the fact that on the revenue side, revenues have slowed down for the end of the year. So we've discussed with the department heads, the need to halt all spending at this point, except for only expenses that are truly needed in order to keep the village functioning and to keep the revenues that are still coming in flowing. So we've had that discussion with them. And I think we should be able to come significantly under budget on the expense side. You know, getting cooperation with that. On the general, the revenue side, that's where we have some more question marks. As of right now, we're at just under 4 million of revenue, of 4.5 million budgeted. I'm expecting about $66,000 in revenue to come in between our utilities, gross receipts tax, franchise fees, cell tower and per capita state aid. I'm sure some more minor miscellaneous revenues, but that's, bulk of it will come in. The next bullet point that I have to talk about on the agenda, I'll speak on now, is the CHIPS revenue. That's the Consolidated Highway Improvement Program. So normally at this time of year, we would be submitting reimbursement between the middle of April and early May in order to get that reimbursement in June. So that would be recorded as revenue in the current fiscal year. Normally, we would have gotten a letter from the state in early April detailing the instructions for submitting for that reimbursement. When it didn't come in, I called the state about two weeks ago and they said that they haven't opened the submission period yet. They weren't sure when that was going to happen since they're basically shut down and all working from home. So you know, my concern was, are we still going to be able to submit this reimbursement? They said, yes, it's just a question of how soon are we going to be able to submit it? And then how soon will that revenue come in after year end? So if it doesn't come in by the end of July, we wouldn't record it as revenue. So we just have to see, you know, wait and see when they open up that submission period. But we're getting all of that documentation together so that as soon as we're able to, we can send that in.
My question Ally for you is, let's say that we get the paperwork in for the money. And it's, we get that in, let's say by, they ask us to send it in, of course, and we send it in and they have it by the end of June. Once we send it in, it's, we still have to receive that revenue by the end of July? Or once it's, once we send in the requests, can that's, can that still be put back to the 2019, 20 budget?
You know, as long as they open the period in the, you know, next month or so.
Okay.
And we're able to get it in, I would think we, and you know, and their reimbursement process doesn't slow down significantly. I would think that we would be able to get it before what it is completed. So, you know, as long as that happens, I think we'll still be able to record it.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Worst case scenario, it becomes a revenue for next year.
That's, that's about 100,000, right?
Right.
Yeah, 100 or, is it 100,000 or is it between 100 and 150,000? The last time, I just, in my head, I had a figure between 100 and 150. Is that correct? Or is it pretty much just around 100?
Yeah, so this is the time in the year where they would normally tell us what our allocation is for next year.
Right.
So that's part of what's holding things up. It should be a little bit over 100,000 that we're reimbursing for. But we're still waiting to get that number for next year of how much has been allocated to us.
Great, thanks Ally.
Okay, no problem. And then to finish talking about the revenues through the end of the year, the $240,000 transfer from the enterprise fund hasn't been recorded yet. And we'll talk about that a little bit more when we get to the enterprise fund. So there's a few accounts that we're expecting shortfalls in. Building permits, you know, that's halted right now. That's about 40,000 under budget. And we would normally be collecting kids camp revenues right now. So that would be another $47,000 in revenue that we aren't collecting right now, less some smaller items.
With kids camp, I mean, I probably, I mean, looking at the landscape of where we are now and where we'll be by July, July 4th, it's probably a good bet that we won't have a kids camp. But if we don't have a kids camp, we won't have the expenses of kids camp. So, but we'll also, we won't have the revenue of kids camp. So that will, I know that the revenue that we get from kids camp, at the end of kids camp, they, they have enough revenue left over to begin to purchase, not, not at that time, at the end of July, but as we get into March, they have, they have a little bit of revenue left over to begin the purchasing of supplies for the camp. So we won't be, I mean, in my mind, we won't be hurt terribly because of the fact that although we won't, we won't receive the, the revenue, we also won't have the expenses for the program.
Right. The thing is, it's just not going to line up. Because kids camp is a smaller revenue lineup. It hasn't been deferred in the past like we do with the golf and the tennis revenue. So normally we would collect the revenue now and record the revenue now. Since most of the spending for kids camp is June, July, we've already recorded, we've recorded the expenses last summer. So, well, we won't have the revenue for this, in this budget. If hopefully things are back to normal next year, we'll have the revenue next year. And then that's something to consider to defer it going forward since we're, you know, that we could get, we could get the revenue and expenses matching going forward.
Right.
So that's how we would have had to do it.
That's something we should discuss as we move forward and make a decision on whether to do that next year. Great, thanks Ally.
No problem. So, you know, the, the revenue side is, you know, where we have less control. So we have to make sure we're managing our expenses and keep our expenses down through the end of the year in order to, you know, not run into a deficit situation and keep any losses that we have for the year to a minimum.
That we will do. I spoke, I spoke with Jason today and he's on board with his budget. And of course, I talked to Mary Lou, but she is in a situation where she's just not getting any revenue because of the building permits. They're not coming in. It's everything shut down. So we will do everything we can to just limit the spending to only the absolutely necessary spending between now and the end of the May. So that's where we will be.
Okay, very good. Now, for the, does anybody have any questions on the general fund at this point? All right, for the enterprise fund, on the expense side, we're at just under 1.7 million of expenses with a $2.2 million budget. Again, we haven't recorded the transfer to the general fund yet, so that's 240,000. And I know Ray has discussed with Jimmy the need for the enterprise fund to also you know, keep all spending, you know, stopped unless it's something that's absolutely necessary to keep the club going through the end of May. On the revenue side, we are at about 2.1 million in revenue, a $2.3 million revenue budget. There's a few lines that we are expecting to come in under budget or just to not meet projections. So at this point in time, the country club rents aren't being received for April and May. So that's about $34,000 in revenue that won't come in. You know, I discussed that with Ray this morning of, you know, when, when that revenue will come in and that's a big question. So.
Yeah, I have, I have absolutely no idea. And sitting here now, we're definitely, we didn't get April. I know we're not going to get May. And I would say that June, I don't think there'll be opening June at this point. We'll see as the the governor has said that they will begin opening, opening up the state. But they're going to start with areas that are very low in the virus. And that's all upstate, the North Country and places like that. They'll open them up first. I cannot see us opening up Long Island until July. And the problem, you know, if you have a, if you have a restaurant and like they do, where 240 people coming to celebrate a wedding or a birthday, then, you know, the, the state may say you can only have 25% of your, the number of people that, that you can hold. Restaurants who have 100, they may only be able to bring in 25, 25 customers. So I don't know where that's going to go. And there's no sense speculating, but I know we're not going to get May. I don't think we're going to get June. And I would be surprised if we get a full rent in the month of July. What, what the state guidelines, how the state guidelines come out. So that's going to be a very difficult situation for not only the village in revenue, but for the people who have weddings and birthdays and different events planned there that, you know, they've canceled. And of course, for the country club, the Irish Coffee Pub there, of course, losing a lot of their revenue also.
Right. Okay. So the, another line item, the golf membership revenue, since last fall, we've been projecting that that was going to come in under budget. And we were expecting that that would be made up for with cart fees and green fees. At this point in time, it looks like cart fees and green fees are probably going to come in right around budget. So there's not going to be enough there to make up for the shortfall in the membership revenue line. And, you know, we lost all the, basically for April, we lost all of that revenue.
In past years, we've always picked up about 20, $25,000 additional cart revenue and probably about 10 to 15,000 dollars in additional green fee revenue. That is definitely not going to happen. We have had no, we're not allowing guests at this point because the tee times are every 15 minutes and you can't bring guests and, and not let members play. So that is the case. Carts have not been used consistently over the time, over the period of time. And people can only put one in a cart. So that is also a reduction in the revenue stream. So that is not a good sign. I think, I, I'm, I'm projecting, I'm projecting that cart revenue as we move into the next season will be, I don't think they'll have two people in a cart until either fall. So we'll see where we go with that. Jimmy, my action has come up with a wonderful plan. We're also going to lose revenue with the golf courses for outings. And outings are every Monday, we have outings there. All the, the started, the, the started, people have started to cancel them now. So they can't have, they can't have their, their dinner at the country club after the, after the event. And a lot of the companies that sponsor these events, their restaurants or major company, a major non-for-profits that use the golf revenue and people, restaurants that usually support those, people that usually support those things, they've just been out of work and so they're being canceled. Then Jimmy's come up with a plan of having Monday as guest day. So residents and members can bring guests on, on Mondays. And he's going to start developing the guidelines for that now so that when we hit that point where a tournament was scheduled, we'll just plug in this guest program. And that will help to bring some revenue in. I don't think it will make up all the revenue of those tournaments, but it will bring in some of the revenue. So I thought it was a good idea and he's going to put the guidelines together over the next couple of days.
Okay. So that basically wraps, wraps up where we are. You know, basically just controlling the expenses that we can since we don't have as much control over the revenue. So we only have a few weeks left in the year. And then, you know, we'll have to evaluate for next year as we get into the summer. You know, how, how the spending has to be for next year's budget.
Right. So at this time, the general fund budget looks like it'll be a photo finish to see whether where expenses are over the revenues and that, and same thing with the golf. It will be a photo finish at the end to see if our revenues cover all, all our expenses. So we'll just keep an eye on it and, and we will move forward.
Right.
The board members have any questions on either, either that, the golf course or the general fund budget? The enterprise budget or the general fund budget?
Understood.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay. All right. So the next item on the agenda was the CHIPS program update, which we already already went over. The third item is that we will need board resolutions at this upcoming meeting to establish capital projects for the Village Hall ADA compliant ramp and the Community Center ADA compliant ramp. Those are the Community Development Block Grants, which have already been approved by the board. So this is just a formality in order to track these expenses in the Capital Projects Fund. We need to document that there's a board resolution allowing those expenses to be recorded there.
Ally, Ally, can you remind me, does, do those grants involve a, a village share as well? Or is it 100%?
No, those are 100%.
Okay, thank you.
Ally, those, both those grants are part of the senior program grant, the same, it's the same government agency that does the senior program grant. And this is the same, same agency, right?
Correct. It's federal money. It's federal housing money.
Great, thank you.
No problem. The next item is the four projects that were put out for bid. John, do you want to go over the bid amount?
Yeah. Thank you, Ally. Just briefly, I'm going to mention the different, the four projects. The, the bids that we had received from the contractor in total for each. You have received in your package in in Exhibit Three. So the four projects listed in the exhibit are the main rock dock, Browns Lane, Osborne Park and the ferry dock. There were four bids that we received. Brant Marine, they totaled $387,556. DRG Construction came in at $441,700. Mechanical Marine Construction came in at $722,947. And lastly, Terry Contracting at $446,070. I placed on here as an option, all four. And at the lowest bid, it came in at $339,000. Option two is for Osborne Park and the ferry dock, the lowest bid. If you combine those two projects are at $119,174. Next on our, yes?
Yeah, one second, John. That's fixing and matching the, the, the bidders, right? The three, yeah, okay. And, and they, they bid individually, understanding that they might get less than all? Is that correct?
That's my understanding, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, we could choose one or all.
We could have four different contractors doing the four different projects.
That's correct, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Next on our agenda, we have the enterprise fund. The trustees had posed questions regarding the enterprise fund and its evolution. You have in your package, the report, this report is draft. It's still being worked on. The authors are Mayor Fell, Treasurer McCabe, Village Attorney Moran. Our auditor from AVZ, Al Brek, Michiano and Zubeck is Tom Ruggiero. I was involved a bit in editing because there are four voices and we wanted to consolidate to one report. For the benefit of those who aren't with us and don't have this in front of them, I'd like to read the report. Again, this is draft and it's still being worked upon. Number one, what is the concept behind the enterprise fund? For the Accounting and Reporting Manual for Local Governments from the Office of the New York State Controller, the OSC, enterprise funds account for operations, A, that are financed and operated in a manner similar to a private business where the intent of the governing body is that the costs, expenses, including depreciation of providing goods and services to the general public on a continuing basis, be financed and recovered primarily from user charges or where the governing body has decided that periodic determination of revenues earned, expenses earned and our net income is appropriate for capital maintenance, public policy, management control, accountability or other purposes. Based on the activities of the Bellport Country Club, the village determined that it would be appropriate to report these activities separately in an enterprise fund as it meets the definition of an enterprise fund set forth by the Office of the State Controller. For the purposes of this report, the Bellport Country Club, when I mentioned the Bellport Country Club, it is golf, its memberships, related fees, green fees, golf tournaments, cart rental, pro shop, as well as the concessionaire, which is the Irish Coffee Pub, the Grill Room, which is Peters on the Green and expense reimbursements from licenses and vendors. What is one, an enterprise fund designed to accomplish? When a government has an activity that is run in a similar manner to a business, it is often determined that it is beneficial to present the accounting separately from the general fund on a similar basis to a private business. This, this allows the government to determine if the activity is being supported by its user fees and is self-sustaining as opposed to being funded through tax dollars. Question two, is an enterprise fund required by law or accounting principles? Or is it purely discretionary? There are cert, there are certain circumstances as outlined below that cause an enterprise fund to be required. If an entity is not required to utilize an enterprise fund, but is determined it has an activity that meets the definition of an enterprise fund, one can still be utilized in order to enhance and improve its management of the area. Per the OSC Accounting and Reporting Manual, activities are required to be reported as an enterprise fund if any one of the following criteria are met. Number one, bullet one, they are, they are financed with debt that is securely solely by pledge of the net revenues from fees and charges of the activity. This is not permissible for New York State local governments and therefore does not apply to the village of Bellport. Bullet two, where laws and regulations Bullet two, where laws and regulations require that the activities cost of providing services, including capital costs such as depreciation or debt service be recovered with fees and charges rather than with taxes of similar similar revenue. Bullet three, the pricing policies of the activity establishes fees and charges designed to recover its costs, including capital costs such as depreciation or debt service. The New York State Department of State Local Government Handbook addresses enterprise funds in the accounting control section where it states, quote, funding, fund accounting is a basic characteristic characteristic of municipal accounting. A fund is segregated for the purpose of carrying on specific activities or attaining certain objectives in accordance with special regulations, restrictions, or limitations, end quote. Local governments may have funds such as highway funds, debt service funds, capital project funds, enterprise funds, internal service funds, and trust and agency funds. The central prin- principle is that funds will be self-contained. An enterprise fund is a self-supporting government fund that sells goods and services to the public for a fee. An enterprise fund uses the same accounting framework followed by entities and the private sector. The village of Bellport does not meet the criteria requiring an enterprise fund. However, at the time the fund was created, it was determined that establishing an enterprise fund would enhance and improve the financial management of the village. Prior to the establishment of the enterprise fund, the village's operations were primarily funded by the golf course rather than tax dollars. For example, in the budget years twenty oh five to twenty oh six, property taxes only funded sixteen percent of the budget, while the golf course funded fifty-six percent of the budget. Although this allowed the governing board at the time to keep property taxes low, the village would have been put into extreme financial hardship if circumstances outside of the village's control continue to decline in the revenue generated by the golf course. Based on this fact, the village, in consultation with its auditing firm, determined that utilizing an enterprise fund will allow the village to monitor the general operations of the village and determine if they are being appropriately funded through property taxes as well as other revenue sources in addition to monitoring the finances of the Bellport Country Club.
Excuse me a minute, scoo- excuse me.
Yes.
Is this the way we're gonna proceed on this, that you're gonna read everything to us? That's how we're gonna go through this?
Yes, um, Mayor Fell had asked me to read this because not everyone watching this right now has the benefit of this in front of them.
Can't they come to the office and get it? Any interested resident, could they come to get it?
They'll have to come and get it if they send an email, like it can be sent to them.
Yeah, but it's a, it's in a draft form yet, it hasn't been finalized. It may, it may be two or three weeks before it's finalized.
Well, but if we're reading the draft to the public, why can't they have a draft? Clearly wrong draft.
Because it's not a, it's not a document that can be foiled, it's dra- it's in draft form.
Again, I think
But 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 wait, wait, wait a second, okay? In other words, we're gonna continue tonight to read through all of this? We can't just read this on our own and make it available if someone, I, I. Okay, okay, I feel like I'm in library storytime or something, but okay.
Well, this is gonna take an hour just to read it, it's eight pages long.
Well, it took us six or seven hours to do it, so I appreciate you uh listening to it.
We've read it, I've had it for a day.
Good. Go ahead, John, continue.
Yeah, I think in deference, um, there there'll be more discussion after this. So to, you know, sort of place this as the groundwork for further discussion tonight, it's uh, can an enterprise fund be created and or terminated at will? What are the legal, financial, and practical implications of creation or termination? An enterprise fund is only required if any of the criteria listed above are met. The village has the option to establish an enterprise fund. It is if it has an activity that operates in a similar manner to a business and the governing board determines that it would be beneficial to monitor the finances of that activity.
John, would you repeat that, please? The village has the option to establish an enterprise fund. It doesn't have an obligation. Is that correct?
This is absurd.
That's what's written here, yes.
Thank you.
The village has an option to establish an enterprise fund if it has an activity that operates in a similar manner to a business and the governing board determines that it would be beneficial to monitor the finances of that activity. According to the OSC, there should be a board resolution to create or terminate an enterprise fund.
To create or, again, John, there should be a board resolution to create. Thank you.
There are no legal implications in connection with the enterprise fund. The enterprise fund is an accounting practice. The legal, financial, and practical implications of creation and termination include the following. The ability to monitor the finance of the business type activity and determine if the activity is being supported by user fees. Consistency in financial reporting, i.e. creating or terminating an enterprise fund, causes inconsistency when it is comparing to prior years. Therefore, the benefits of creating or terminating a fund needs to be weighed against the inconsistency that would be caused. Costs, accounting, and auditing fees associated with creation and termination. Last bullet, increased complexities and inefficiencies caused by the addition of funds. So, the Bellport Enterprise Fund specifically, when and why was it created? Uh, this is some, an evolution from uh twenty or oh six uh to the present. Uh, so of course, we had to uh do research to get this information because it wasn't during um Mayor Fell's administration. Prior to the twenty oh six oh seven fiscal year, all village revenue revenues and expenses flowed through the general fund. The annual village village audit was completed using a format of reporting all of the village's fiscal activities, one consolidated audit, which included all Bellport Country Club activity. All village revenues and expenses were tracked and audited through the general fund. The village also utilized the capitalized capital fund to track capital expenditure within a water fund that was used by residents to reimburse the village for installing Suffolk County Water Authority infrastructure to bring water to their homes. During fiscal year oh six oh seven, the village changed audit firms, Albrecht, Vigiano, and Zurich. AVZ was engaged as the new auditors. The village consulted with ABC regarding approving the financial reporting of the village in accordance with the OSC, the Governmental Accounting Standards Board, GASB, and generally ex- generally accepted accounting principles. I'd just like to add here, it's not in our report, but at this time, it's also where GASB imposed itself um within the governmental accounting standard boards and changed some of its rules. So that also sort of promulgated they're getting more involved at that point. And so I'll continue with the report. And to gain an understanding of how other towns and villages account for their transactions, including recreational activities. Based on an analysis performed by the village with the assistance of AVZ, AVZ recommended several options, including where the village reports its golf and related activities separately as an enterprise fund in order to enhance the village's financial reporting, to better monitor how the activities of the village are being funded. During the oh six oh seven fiscal year, the village's treasurer's office continued the past practice of accounting for all village revenue and expenses, including the B C, the the Bellport Country Club activities through the general fund. In fiscal years oh six oh seven and oh six oh oh five to oh six and oh six to oh seven, property taxes represented only sixteen percent and twenty one percent of the village revenues in the budget respectively. During the research for this report, it became evident that for at least twenty years prior to oh five oh six fiscal year, the Bellport Country Club was the major revenue source for the village. The financial statements indicated the village was overly reliant on revenue from non-property tax revenue sources. The village was specifically concerned because the Bellport Country Club revenue, which was fifty-six percent of the total village budgeted revenue in fiscal year oh five oh six and fifty-two percent of the total budgeted revenue in fiscal year oh six oh seven could be negatively influenced by circumstances that are uncontrollable to the village. These circumstances could include the following. An economic downturn causing a de- decrease in membership and thus a decrease in revenue. Two, rever- weather-related conditions such as hurricane or other large disaster that would cause a shutdown of the Bellport Country Club for a prolonged time. Three, soil fungus, grass disease, or other related growing problems that could cause a major deterioration of the gol- golf course's playing conditions causing a loss of member slash revenue. Any of the following circumstances would would result in a major adverse financial impact on the village due to the village's reliance on the Bellport Country Club revenue. If any such conditions were to occur, it would severely impact the village finances and its ability to operate. If the Bellportville, if the Bellport Country Club revenue diminished due to uncontrollable circumstances, the village tax revenues would not be sufficient for them by themselves to adequately fund the general fund expense budget. The village would experience an untenable amount of fiscal stress. Reporting the Bellport Country Club activities in a separate fund would allow the village to determine if the tax revenue adequately supported the general operations of the village as well as monitored the financials of the Bellport Country Club. The oh six oh seven unaudited financial statement separated the financial activity of the Bellport Country Club and related activities from the general fund and reported the Bellport Country Club financial position and activity in an enterprise fund. And here in the report, we say enterprise fund and capital because that is the enterprise fund that we speak of today versus the general fund. Um, it's a recommended accounting pr- practice when municipality has an activity that operates as a business rather than being reported solely in the general fund. And this is the first time in the evolution of the enterprise fund that the village's audited financial statements reported the Bellport Country Club independently from the general fund. All Bellport Country Club financial activity was designated as the village's newly formed enterprise fund in the financial statements. The village separate all revenue expenses associated with the Bellport Country Club from the general fund so that all financial activity ex- associated with the Bellport Country Club was reported through the enterprise fund. As this occurred during the oh six oh seven fiscal year, it is assumed that the village board and the mayor at the time were supportive of this ca- course of action. From oh six seven oh eight through twenty oh twelve to twenty twenty eleven to twenty twelve, the fiscal year audits followed the same methodology. Each year, all revenues and expenses of all the village activities, including the Bellport Country Club operations, were collected and accounted for through the general fund by the treasurer's office. Then at the end of each year, during the audit process, the financial activity of the general fund and the financial activity of the Bellport Country Club was audited through the enterprise fund. In twenty ten eleven audit, AVZ communicated material we- weakness in the management letter to the village. The purpose of a management letter is to communicate internal control issues that need to be addressed in order to prevent a misstatement in the village's financials. The letter, which is the harshest harshest comment the auditor can make, stated that the village should account for the Bellport Country Club in in perenn enterprise fund financial account activity throughout the year rather than making adjustments at the end. Fiscal year twenty twelve, twenty thirteen was the first year that the village's treasurer accounted for the revenue and expenses of the Bellport Country Club and the enterprise fund throughout the year. All Bellport Country Club revenue and expenses were recorded in the accounting system, the enterprise. The audit of the twenty twelve, twenty thirteen fiscal year continued the practice of dividing the village's funds into the general fund and the enterprise fund. It was a major difference with the village's fiscal activity. The village treasurer was now separating the B, the Bellport Country Club's yearly fiscal activity from the general fund throughout the year in the treasurer's department accounting program on our computer network. Each subsequent year has followed the same format. The yearly Bellport Country Club revenue and expenses are collected and expended through the enterprise fund. In fiscal year twenty nineteen, twenty twenty, the village taxes funded fifty-six percent of the village's general fund budget. The remaining forty-four percent was derived from amenity revenues and county, state, and federal grants. This ratio shows the village in a fiscally sound and responsible financial position. Number two, what streams of income and expenses are included and why, i.e. golf, but not tennis? The streams of in- income in the enterprise fund are from golf, perenn memberships, and related fees, greens fees, golf tournaments, car rentals, pro shop, end of perenn, as well as country club rent, grill room rent, and expense reimbursements from licenses and vendors. Expenses are listed in detail in the monthly treasury reports and are broken down into categories of golf course, pro shop, country club, men's locker room, ladies locker room, employee benefits, and inter-fund transfers. Based on sound accounting management, including GASP and GAAP, and as directed by the OSC in the accounting and reporting manual for villages, quote, "A government should establish and maintain those funds required by law and sound financial administration." Based on this principle, quote, "Only the minimum number of funds consistent with legal and operating requirements should be established as unnecessary funds result in inflexibility, undue complexity, and inefficient financial administration," end quote. Due to the materiality and nature, i.e. business type, of the activities that take place at the Bellport Country Club, it is prudent to report those activities separately within an enterprise fund. The village of Bellport offers many activities and activities in addition to golf, including a marina, ferry, beach, tennis, and kids camp. In addition to the consideration of whether or not an activity is intended to be self-sustaining and primarily supported by user fees rather than property taxes, the village should also consider the number of activities that take place, the materiality of the financial statements, and the increased complexities and efficiencies and costs that arise from the creation of more funds than is necessary, e.g., uh, increased accounting costs and additional bank accounts required that need to be set up and utilized for each fund. As stated above, one of the major determining factors in establishing additional funds is based on the activities' materiality to the financial statements. For the year ended May thirty-first, twenty nineteen, the revenue generated by kids camp, tennis, beaches, ferry, and marina was sixty-five thousand, fifty thousand, twenty thousand, sixty-five thousand, two hundred and twenty thousand respectively, while the revenue generated by the golf course and country club was two million dollars. Based on the materiality of the other activities, the additional cost and inefficiencies that rise from operating funds more than is necessary would not outweigh the benefit of establishing separate funds. Question three, how can the elements be properly separated to determine prof- profit or loss? All municipalities in New York State are required to use a standard system for classifying and coding accounting transactions. The purpose is to provide a standard format for recording and reporting financial transactions which allows comparisons to be made with other municipalities. The village of Bellport follows this system and is mandated to annually report its financial statements to the OSC in this manner. The village categorizes the revenue expenses by department slash major categories in accounting system while maintaining compliance with the reporting requirements of New York State. For example, the monthly treasurer's report breaks the enterprise fund expenses down by golf course, pro shop, country club, et cetera. General fund expenditures are broken down by beaches, ferry, kids camp, tennis, et cetera. Based on this system, the government, governing board, and management can determine the profit and loss for each area. As the fiscal year progresses, the managing body can determine how the revenue expenses are meeting budgeted expectations.
John, is the managing body the trustees?
I, no, it's my, it's my administration, you are the governing body.
I say.
Yeah. That's my understanding, Mike.
It can apply to both, yeah.
Great, thank you, Ali. Uh, next question, what is the proper allocation of profits and losses from shared services or costs? The village properly reports revenue and expenses slash expenditures and therefore profits and losses based on the reporting requirements of the OSC. All expenses in the funds slash accounts where they are recorded are listed in the monthly abstract reports and are also indicated on vouchers, that the voucher that is maintained with every invoice. Vendors are directed to indicate the area slash areas of the village that their invoice relates to so that it can be recorded in the proper fund and account. Any invoice that is unclear is reviewed with the department heads to determine where the expense is related. Department heads also sign the vouchers for all expenses that they are responsible for overseeing in order to confirm that the expenses are valid and relate to the department. Administrative costs are allocated between funds. However, the allocation should be reviewed and when necessary with the village's outside accountants for reasonableness. The village also needs to take into consideration that each fund should stand on its own and be self-sustaining as well as follow the charts of accounts prescribed by the OSC. Based on this mandated standard, allocation should be kept to a minimum. Costs can be further allocated for purposes of internal analysis if the village determines that it is necessary. Can the presentation be changed to better reflect this? The enterprise fund is presented properly based on the requirements of the OSC. Further analysis for internal use could be compared if necessary. Four, what are the pros and cons of retention or modification? The pros of retention are consistency in financial reporting and the ability to manage the operations of the business-type activities that take place at the Bellport Country Club. The cons are lack of consistency and the inability to easily monitor the finances of the Bellport Country Club without performing additional analysis in order to separate the Bellport Country Club accounts from the other activities of the village. What are the, this is the last, we're almost finished. What are the legal, financial, and practical implications of terminating or changing elements? Although there are no legal implications in creating, terminating, or changing elements of the enterprise fund, legal procedure does apply when establishing or transferring funds. Budgetary transfers in and out of the fund are subject to a vote of the board, Perenn Legislative Act. The legal, financial, and practical implications of creation and termination include the following. Bullet one, the ability to monitor the finances, the business-type activity, and determine if the activity is being supported by user fees. Bullet two, consistency in financial reporting, creating or terminating an enterprise causes inconsistency when compared to prior years. Therefore, the benefits of creating or terminating a fund needs to be weighed against the inconsistency that is caused. Costs, accounting, and audit fees associated with creation, termination, and last bullet, increased complexities and efficiencies caused by the addition of funds. Thank you for your patience while I read that. Mayor Fow.
Okay, are there any questions?
Yeah, I have questions. Where in the board minutes was the enterprise fund authorized to be created?
Well, that was back in two thousand five, two thousand six. I have no idea.
So then it has not been found?
I don't, I haven't looked for it.
Oh, well, shouldn't that be a cornerstone of this document?
There was a search. There was a thorough search, and we did not find a resolution.
Okay, then a question I have for David. David, can the Board of Trustees terminate this contract?
It's not a contract.
It's not a contract. It's an accounting principle, not a contract.
Okay, then, so allow, I wrote something down. Allow me to tell you how I feel about this. I want to thank Ray and everyone who created this document. It took you a lot of work, and thank you for bringing these pertinent facts forward. I do not object to the existence of an enterprise fund. It enables the accurate monitoring of the village golf program. I'm in favor of keeping the enterprise fund. My objection today, as it has been since I took office, is for accounting the rent paid on Bellport Village leases with South Country Caterers and Peters on the Green into the enterprise fund as revenue and not into the general fund. The board has recently been made aware of an interest on the part of the current leasing South Country Caterers to extend their contract with the village.
Mike, 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 you're gonna, Mike, you have to stop. That's not, that's, that was discussed in meetings that I don't believe.
I'm not saying anything more. I'm not saying anything beyond that. As stated in the report, it is a Board of the Trustees' decision. Do nothing and maintain the status quo, or the Board of Trustees can vote for the current and future lease payments from South Country Caterers and Peters on the Green be recognized as property of the general fund and accounted accordingly.
I don't know if that's true or not.
Well, I don't know if the board, I don't know if the board can just summarily say the rent for that is, goes to the general fund, both at the South Country Caterers and Peters on the Green. There are, there are, the golf course pays for certain things that happen, both at Peters on the Green and at the country club. So those would have to be reimbursed to the, if you did that, the general fund would have to reimburse that, that money to the enterprise fund.
But we're currently reimbursing the general fund from the enterprise fund this year with a quarter of a million dollars.
Well, that's, that's something the village should do then.
Well, that's up to the board.
That's right.
Whether the board is interested. My concern is if, if the rent is increases for whatever reason.
The rent is not going to increase, Mike. They are having trouble with this COVID. They're, they're having trouble running a business. How are you going to increase the rent? Mike, explain to me how you're going to increase the rent.
Right, I don't want to increase the rent now. I'm talking about in the future. They've got a contract with us until twenty twenty seven.
Oh, then, then the rent is not going to be increased until twenty twenty seven.
You're right.
So, I don't know where you're going with it.
I'm going with the fact that the money, in my eyes, just my eyes, should go, since it's a contract, a lease, a license between the village, which is all the residents, and these two business entities, that revenue should go directly into the general fund and not into the enterprise fund. To me, it artificially inflates the revenue into the enterprise fund, and then the enterprise fund has to give it back. That's all I'm saying.
Yeah, I, can I just interject? I hear you, Mike. We had to look back deep because it's over fourteen years since its genesis, the enterprise fund. And there wasn't analysis done at that time, and I wish we could lay our hands on it today, but we don't have that per se. But the revenues are coming from the parkland that is there, everything that is there other than the cell tower and the tennis. And I don't know why the tennis wasn't included. Isn't that correct, Ally?
Right, and, you know, obviously I wasn't there, but I would assume because the tennis is a separate operation, even though it's physically located in the same area, it's not part of the golf course and.
Ally, hold on, Ally, hold on a second.
The enterprise fund is to look at specific activities.
John, unless I'm mistaken, back then, there was no grill room, or it was all run by the same entity.
That's correct, yes, yes.
An amount of money that the golf members had to spend in the grill room or, or in the entity itself. There wasn't two separate entities.
That's correct.
For the initial formation of the, of the enterprise fund because there was an assessment of monies that the members had to spend in that entity.
Right.
Right, I'd like to, I'd like to jump in for, all right, go ahead, Mike.
No, no, go, Joe.
Okay, I'd like to jump in for a minute. I concur with Mike that I also applaud and appreciate all the work that's gone into this and the questions that was put together for the origination of this. I think it's an excellent, excellent documents that were put together. And it, and at the same time, my concern is, we've gone over this, it seems like several, several times already, but in more depth and detail. The other part is, keep in mind, this has been going on, you already heard, for how many years, and that means that our auditors are also part of this whole thing, that they review it, plus our treasurer, and then the board involved with it. Okay, my next concern is, does everybody understand that all of our documents, when you get to this, are also available to the AG, the Attorney General's Office for the state, for all review of municipalities? I dealt with that for thirty-five years, and part of it is, at any time that they pull something, they have a right to go into it in different detail. Our auditors that have been with us all these years have been walking us through it. At the same time, we're now at, I mean, I hope, a feeling of, you know, better communication regarding it, which I think was needed, because I think the more we have transparency and better communication, it helps the whole situation. Now, I go a step farther, though. Is, is someone, meaning, are they of the mindset or the volition that if you've read all of this, including, no offense, John, you reading to us tonight, I'm not big on that, and I feel like I'm back in kindergarten, but anyway, my concern is the availability for people to, you know, foil it or get it by email or whatever in light of the virus that we're going through, it's, it's a stand-up document. I mean, it's right there. Now, my last point is, if, if one of, if one of the members here tonight is of the mindset that A, we, we put more things into it, you know, like, I don't know, the ferry boat or, or Ally's comment regarding tennis, or we dissolve it or something like that, I would like to have clarity and direction if somebody is of that mindset, because I want to get to the point that we all are on the same page, if possible, and if, if not, if not, let's have the clarity cleared up regarding it. And yes, I conclude by saying I agree with you, Mike. Documents that were well done, well thought out, I like to hear the history. John, though, your opening comment was, you bring in the word draft, okay? You know, how, how many times are we going to use the cover of the word draft? I mean, what, what's a draft in regard to this? Look at the depth that everything went into. So when I hear the word draft, I'm saying, as a trustee, are we now going to get more information than what we already have? Or are we at closure? Because Bob Rosenberg had a great set of questions, okay? Mike, you had stuff. I verbalized mine. Steve's had his input, okay? And now you had all these people come together for this document. So the word draft, I don't understand. Do we have more that we need on this? Are we at closure yet?
Was that a statement or a question? Or both?
Both.
Right, so.
It's a statement and a question. You, you opened it up by saying the word draft, John.
That's correct, yeah, yeah, it is a draft. I think the genesis of even this discussion goes quite, quite far back. There were some questions earlier in the year. More questions were posed that formed the basis of the report. Unfortunately, due to COVID and the pandemic, we were focused, we had made great headway in the beginning before the epidemic to getting the report together. We were reminded, I, I don't know, at our last work session, like, where is this report? So we've been working on it diligently to get it to this place for tonight.
But, but, John, let me try to rephrase Joe's question, because it's the right question. Is this the substance, the complete substance of what we should be looking at? And you've got some commas misplaced that need to be fixed, and that's the draft element. Or are you still working on substance, in which case, frankly, reading it was premature? So I'm confused.
Well, John, Bob, don't be confused. First of all, the board has to, before this can be released, the board has to accept it, and that can't be done until our next meeting. So the board can accept it, and it can be, it can be distributed any way you want to distribute it, but until that happens, it can't be distributed.
Okay, fine, but the question remains, did we just hear a draft subject to new substance still being worked on? Or did we hear a, a, a substantively final version? And by the way, before you answer that, I think it's a terrific work product. It answers all the questions that I had.
Let me answer your question very clearly. I want time to, I want time to look at this document again to see if I want to add anything or take anything out.
Okay, that, that.
And then at that point, I'll have it ready for, I will have it ready for the next meeting, and the board can, the board can, by resolution, accept the report, and then it can be given. I don't care who you give it to.
Okay.
All right, but Mr. Mayor, I'm not trying to put you on the spot, but do you, no, I am trying to put you on the spot. Mr. Mayor, do you feel right now that this pretty much, you're comfortable with the whole thing? Or, or do you have, you know, something inside that says to you, oh, oh, wait a minute, I want to go deeper on something? I mean, if you're feeling good about it, and I recognize you're going to review it before the, the, the board meeting, okay? But just, just for tonight, are you feeling, this is a great thing?
No, Joe, I'm not feeling anything. I just need, I need everyone, all the board members to take, take time to really look at it and send, send comments to John or send comments to me saying, it's perfect, you don't have to do anything to it. I just think it takes, it needs that reflection.
I mean, Mr. Mayor, you've enlisted a, a, a lot of services of people. I mean, you got the attorney, you got the auditor, our treasurer, our senior administrator, you've had board members, trustees that have put in, you know, work on it, and then you in regard to the history. I mean, I don't know, I, I think you people should be feeling proud that this thing has been, you know, a challenge, and, and we're getting through it, I think. And I think the community hopefully is going to feel positive too. But, you know, me, I'm always high road positive, but I feel good about it.
Joe, I can't, I can't answer your question, Joe. I'm going to look at it again. There'll be a final draft, and the board will be able to adopt it or accept it and by resolution at the next meeting, and then you can do whatever you want with it.
For, for instance, just real quick, hearing some of Trustee Farigno's comments this evening, I don't know how Ally feels about it, but as someone who had a hand in its, its draft, I would like to go back and take what Mike said and maybe elaborate a little further to flesh out his questions about parkland, questions about why tennis wasn't involved, flesh out, you know, the ramifications of including the leases or not including the leases. And that's why I believe it was a draft, to flesh out some of your questions, I trust.
Thank you, David.
Okay, in that case.
I just have to make my point then again. I, I, I have a challenge when I hear the word draft, and we keep going over the same stuff. We've made great accomplishments, okay? And move forward on so many things, and in a few minutes, we're going to be bringing up other stuff that I, I feel like we already covered it, and, and I think we got to make the decisions and move on. I mean, that's.
Okay, I understand. Joe, I understand all of that. We will take the document, we'll look at it, and we'll have a final draft, a final document for the board to consider at the business meeting in the end of May.
Ray, as a deputy mayor, I'm not looking for us not to go any farther into something. That's not what I'm saying. I, I, I just, from what I've read regarding everything, and, and John, I, I think, you know, said it very well tonight on everything that was read to us, I'm ready to go outside for recess, but the bottom line is, okay, we're, we're there. So I hope, Mr. Mayor, that for our monthly meeting, we, we can get a clarity of where we stand on this, and if somebody feels that they want to, you know, add to it or shut the whole thing down or whatever, let's get it on there, let's get it going. I think it's great.
If I may, again, I, I think this is a terrific, a terrific report, but since it is a draft, as that was justified by the mayor, I would like to see added to it an analysis of how the charges from the golf course to the other entities works, how the amount is determined, and where it comes from.
I don't understand your quote, the charges from the enterprise fund to where?
The, the charges within the enterprise fund, as I understand it, Ray, from the golf course to the catering and Peters, the, the shared expenses.
Oh, yeah, that, yeah, I'll start looking at that, but that could take two or three weeks. I'm, you know, I don't have, I don't have every, every hour, every day to do it.
Yeah, okay. So. You, you may recall that that's what generated this in the first place.
I mean, for example, just sitting here, there is, the, the golf course does all of the reading, the, all of the. the, all of the cutting of grass around the clubhouse, all of the planting of the flowers. All that is done, so that would have to be charged, that would, there'd be a charge that would have to be generated to recoup that that money.
Yes, and you'll recall that the reason this became a hard issue was because we felt we couldn't determine whether or not the golf course truly was or wasn't profitable. You know, where the excess back to the village really properly came from. So I.
Well, I don't know, I would have to, I would have to sit down with the, with Parkland. And I can't, I can't do that until the social distancing thing is up. I mean, I'd have to sit down with them, find out what they do, what they do for the enterprise fund. We have Monday tournaments, which we probably won't have this year, but the Monday tournaments. There is a, there is a relationship between the golf course and the restaurant. The restaurant provides the meals for the tournaments, breakfast, lunch, and dinner. And the golf, the golf course, of course, provides the facility for the people to play golf. So you have to come, you'd have to come to what each of those is financially worth. And if it's, if one is taken away, then the other would have to reimburse the golf course for whatever services they were using at the golf course. And the golf course would have to reimburse the village for other things. So it's a, it would be a project that would have to, it would take time to do that.
No, no question.
If you want to wait until that's done to release this report, I'm fine with that.
I say wait until you're comfortable with it, Ray.
Yeah, personally, I would wait because, again, that was the, answering that question was the genesis of why we're here. So I think the project is not complete until we have that, however long it takes. But that's, that's my view.
Well, then, that question wasn't, at least I didn't get that out of the questions that I read. That that was the genesis, I mean, we could have saved a lot of time if we.
Oh, no, no. No, I drafted those questions. They were essential.
I know, but what I'm saying is the question that you're asking me now, I don't, I don't read that in those questions that you ask.
Okay.
Is that correct?
That is correct, that it is not specifically there, that is right, yeah.
Right, so you tell me what you want to do. Do you want me to, do you want me to go through the report and look at it? I think it's fine, and then bring it to the village board meeting? Or do you want to wait until I do those other things that you you have just asked me?
I'm for waiting.
Okay, then we'll put this on hold until it's done.
Can I also just note that throughout the budget process, we talked about the fact of that we need to back away from these budgeted transfers from the enterprise fund to the general fund.
Yes.
It should only be, you know, a calculated administrative fee. You know, it's, the golf course is something that's cyclical. It's, it's a business, it's not going to have the same fit every year. So to say that every year the golf course is going to have a certain amount of money left over, I just find that a little bit problematic.
No, 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 that 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 wasn't the, no, you can't do that, of course not.
That's what, to me, Ally, the concept should be that whatever services the village is providing to the golf course should be a repeating effort. You should be able to monitor that annually. It shouldn't be arbitrary.
Right.
It should be so many hours of accounting time, so many hours of highway time, all these.
But Mike, Mike, you can't do that. You can estimate, you can't, if I go back and say to everyone, I want you to document every time you begin to work on the golf course, you have to get a book out and say, at 9:15, I started working on golf course stuff. It can't happen. It's got to be an estimate. When I talk to the, when I talk to the auditors, I think two years ago, they said 5% of everyone's time would be a good estimate.
Good. Excellent. You have it.
There's a measure, sure.
But I mean, it's not going to be, it's not going to be a situation where people are going to document the time they spend.
No, 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 no. No, I don't think anyone's suggesting that, Ray. I think it's exactly.
Have a reasonable, consistent base, consistent basis.
Correct.
If it's 5%, it's 5% every year. If it's 8%, it's 8%. And in that way, it's not taking $240,000 at the end of the year and giving it back. It's already out of there.
No, no, Mike, it won't be out of there. It has to be a transfer at the end of the year. That's what, that's what will happen.
But if there's nothing there, Ray, there's nothing to transfer.
But you you put in your budget the estimated transfer, that that will be part of the golf course budget. And you're right, at the end of the year, if the money isn't there, you can't transfer money that's not there. Absolutely correct.
Again, thank all of you for doing what you've done. Please, this, with all this COVID business going on, you've got your hands full of all this. Let's, let's put this to the side for a while.
Did we address the initial questions?
Did we?
I think we did. I think the root, I think the root, excuse me, Mayor, I think the root is Steve's questions, and I agree 100%. And Steve, I think I know where you're coming from. We were presented by two of the trustees, a list of questions that we provided answers to. I think we need to keep this, hold on, I think we need to keep this separate. One is simple mathematics or detailed mathematics, and one is questions as to form legal theory and accounting principles. We should keep it separate. Let's, let's agree that we've answered substantially the questions posed, and let's move on from there. Because the rest of it is accounting.
If I understand what you're saying, I do not understand. If I understand not to understand, can the Board of Trustees choose to change the revenue stream from those two leases back to the general fund or not? That's a question.
Ally, correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe that answer to be yes.
We put it there in the first place, why can't we undo it? That was a question, that was one of the questions.
That's the fundamental question, yes.
That was one of the questions I posed, and I thought it was answered, that that these, there may be good reasons not to change it.
But it's up to us.
But we can change it.
Right, and it's not just as simple as just going forward, moving the revenue into the general fund. If that's something that we're considering, it's going to take, you know, a significant analysis of everything that needs to be moved back to the general fund.
Sure, it's a big complicated issue.
Right, you know, it's also the balance sheet side of the, all of the assets and liabilities that are related to the country club. So it's not a simple switch.
Yeah, and Dave, to your point that it's separate, it is on one level and not on another. By which I mean that I can't analyze what should happen, these are the, these legal conclusions, without that other information. Doesn't mean it needs to be in this memo.
See, you know, one of the things, one of the things that you, when you look at the, I, again, I don't know this happened because I wasn't there at the time, but when they decided back in 2005, '06 that they were going to have all the rent from the concession go to the golf course. At that point, the concession was a big part of the golf course. They ran the grill room, they received money from, they received money from each member, I think it was $600 a member. And so, you know, over time, they don't, that was eliminated. And now they're not supplying, they're not running the grill room anymore. So the only connection they have with the, at least off the top of my head, the only two connections they have with the golf course now is Monday tournaments. They receive a big line of revenue from Monday tournaments. And two, they receive services that the golf course provides as far as outside maintenance, lawn maintenance and shrub maintenance and plantings of flowers and things. So I don't know if there's others, I have, I have to, I have to sit down with them and ask of other others. And so we can see what the, what the cost is for all of that, and then the board can make it an intelligent decision.
Exactly.
For instance, if they're, if they're having outdoor weddings in their garden that's well manicured and beautiful flowers, and Parkland is maintaining that for them, that has a substantial value.
Yes, it does, yes, it does.
So we have to go, I think we have to go into all of that and come up with a, with a formula that this is what we feel the golf course is providing, or the, yeah, the golf course is providing to the restaurant. And what is the restaurant providing?
Yes. And Ray, what you're saying, I'm not suggesting how this should come out by any stretch. I haven't decided in my own mind. But what you just said about the change in relationship, since the time that this thing was put in effect, is exactly the reason why it needs to be reconsidered now, because that. Okay, then I won't belabor the point, okay.
I totally don't disagree with that.
Okay.
You know, the country club had a major responsibility as far as providing services. And remember, when the, when the country club was providing services to the golfers outside, outside, the public was not allowed to be there in that, in that, if you want to call it a grill room, whatever you want to call it. The public was not allowed to be there, it was for village residents and golf members only. Now, we do, and so that limited the financial, what they could reap financially from that area because only the village residents and golf course members were allowed to be in that room. Now, I think, I mean, this is just off the top of my head. I think probably now the public and the golf course and village resident, residents, I think the general public, if you broke it down, and again, this is just me, my being there and seeing it. I think probably the general public probably is about 50% of their revenue. The golf course is about, the golf course members are about 30% of their revenue. And village residents are about 20% of their revenue in the grill room. That's my feeling. I mean, I'll go in there for breakfast in the morning. I don't see any village residents, I see all outside people.
Yeah.
So, and at dinner, when I go there, I do see, I'll go there on a Friday night, I see a table of, every Friday night, I see a table of fire department people. And I see occasionally some village residents, but I think generally on Friday and Saturday night, the people who are in there are non-residents having dinner. So.
Okay.
Ergo the issue.
Thank you again, thank you.
Okay, so what we'll do, we'll hold this report off, we'll put it over the side until we come out with a breakdown of, you know, financially, what, what the golf course is, is providing for the country club and what the country club provides for the golf course. And we'll go from there.
Okay.
Okay, great. Okay, John, thank you. And next on the agenda, and thank you, the board, for your input, it was appreciated. Drafted, increase in the tennis membership. The tennis membership, the tennis has a online booking system. And the company that did it is squeezing them a little bit. They want, they want them to pay for 12 months instead of just the five months or four months that they, that they currently provide. And they want them to pay $250 a month for 12 months for that service. The golf course is used as a company called Chelsea. Chelsea also asks for 12 months of service, and it's two, but it's $200 a month. So they want to go with Chelsea, and the $20 increase in the membership is to pay for, they can't find a company that'll only do it for four months. They all want now, you have to pay the money, $250 or $200 a month for 12 months. So that $20 is going to pay for the increase in their online booking, for their online booking system. So there'll be, there'll be a resolution at the next meeting to increase the tennis membership that we approved back in probably November, increase it by $20, so that's what that's for. Okay, any questions? Okay.
The tennis committee feels that their members will not object to this.
Well, I'm sure they'll object to it, but the, but the, you have to have an online booking system. Otherwise, you're going to have people down there arguing, well, I, I called in first, you know. And the booking, the online booking system also has a weighted system. So on Saturday morning, if I get 8 o'clock, I can't get 8 o'clock Sunday morning. It's, you know, someone else will get it. I, I'll get a time within 45 minutes of that time. So they all like that, the fact that, you know, so it should, it'll be, it'll be fine, yes, it'll be fine. Village reopening plan, John?
Yes, Mayor Fell, as we mentioned earlier, we, we have guidance that we receive both from New York State, the governor's office, and also Suffolk County. You know, we're blessed with many amenities, and of course, the season is upon us, the weather is getting nicer. So we're meeting with our area heads to sort of eke out different scenarios. You know, specifically, as Mayor Fell mentioned earlier, with golf, the ferry, kids camp. We really have to move forward. Mayor Fell said early on that we all should be, you know, really digging, understanding the most conservative outlook, meaning if, you know, social distancing has to remain throughout the summer season, a moderate impact to the revenues and the expenses. And then at that time, I recall myself thinking, well, this is going to be a couple of months of pain. And then, you know, certainly by the season, the summer season, everything should change. But as we all know, that that did, did not, is not occurring. And we do, you know, receive on our daily calls with the county and our. Albany, we are getting guidance.
So I'll just talk a little bit, I won't belabor it, but I think that beaches will be open sometime in around July 4th for the big beaches with parking lots. Bellport's beach, I think we'll be able to open before that. The problem with the Bellport beach is not opening the beach, it's the ferry.
Right.
We have 40 people on the ferry, and they're shoulder to shoulder, nose to nose. So, you know, I don't know what we're going to do with the ferry. I don't know if they'll say ferries can try, can, you can use ferries, but only, you know, 50% of the people that the ferry carries you can have on the ferry. So we'd have to take a look at that. Maybe we can't even carry 20, maybe we can only do 15. And if we do 15, is it worth running the ferry? I mean, you know, you have, the ferry runs hourly, and you run 15 people, it runs four, four times. That's 60 people that we're going to take over to the beaches, is it worth it? So these are things that as the government, as the state gives us guidance, we're going, you know, we're going to have to take a look at and make decisions about. So I don't, you know, I don't think we're going to have a kids camp this year. That's what everything's pointing to. I mean, they called school off through the end of June. So, uh, we'll know a little bit better. They said in about a week and a half, they're going to make, uh, some, uh, decisions on summer school. So if they have a summer school and they have guidance for summer school, we may be able to, and they'll also, they will have, uh, guidance on, uh, summer programs. So, uh, we'll see where that goes, but, uh, I would say that, that's gonna happen in about a week or two.
Ray, I know that Ron Hammond has already lined up performers for our Friday night concerts. And they understand that everything is on hold, but he does people if you want to have that.
Well, it's, it's not a question of whether we want to have it, it's will we be allowed to have it? I mean, and what it will cost, I mean, um, you know, social distancing down there, I mean, you go down there and people are, you know, sitting right next to each other on blankets and, of course, that's probably not gonna be ha, happen, but there's no use specing. We'll just have to wait and see what, um, what the state, the guidelines the state sets up for those, uh, those type of programs. I've already talked to, um, uh, the fire department. They have a, their next, um, uh, program is the car show. So that's in June. They've canceled that already and they're gonna reschedule it for, uh, you know, the fall, September or October. And I've talked to Jim, um, I've talked to Jim, um, Vaughn about the, um,
Memorial Day?
Memorial Day parade and everyone is canceling the parade. Uh, so, um, Jim said that, um, he'll just wait till Friday, uh, to see, uh, if there's any additional guides from the state. But, um, I would imagine we're probably gonna be canceling the 4th, the, um, Labor Day parade, uh, Memorial Day parade. So we'll make, uh, I'll let you know, we'll put, um, we'll put notices on the, um, on the website when those decisions are, are finally made. Okay, John, yeah, we're gonna have to come, we're gonna have to, uh, do plans, uh, for opening. I know that the golf course has the plan for the, for their opening. The tennis commission is right now working on a plan for opening tennis. So we'll have that planned soon. So, um, we should start working on the, uh, opening the beach, the ferry, uh, we should, uh, kids camp. We should be all looking at that to see if we, uh, uh, at least start developing an outline of a plan. So, uh, we ha, we have the beginning of it anyway. Uh, John, anything else?
Yeah, I'd just like to add, um, you, you know, everything you've said is so important. It's really about being patient. The, you know, there, it's proceeding with caution as we've heard from Governor Cuomo. You know, likewise for us, um, we are looking, as I said earlier, different scenarios. But we do have to wait because we see our staff likewise is currently on pause. So, um, you know, we've, I've been working with the different areas, the department heads, uh, especially, um, DPW with Jason, with the scenarios, because a lot has to get done to prep for the season. So, um, we're, you know, there, we hear in our, uh, calls, um, with the county, from the other, uh, communities, the other municipalities, that everyone is very anxious to get started because they know that, you know, there are commitments that have to be made, uh, and yet they're all still on pause. So we're hoping that it's lifted. It has really to do with, uh, with, uh, testing and contact tracing. They're trying to institute, um, guidance in, in regard to, uh, those two areas to, you know, harness the, the, or lessen the spread of the virus. So, um, we're being patient.
Mr. Mayor, I reached out to the, uh, company that provides our, um, facilitating of our tennis courts each spring. And then at the end of the year, they're ready to go when we need them. So, uh, you know, we'll, whatever the date is, and John, you should be aware of it too. Uh, we just give them the green light. I spoke to them, uh, last week, Wednesday, uh, to be sure that they were ready. And, uh, whenever you say, they're ready to, uh, do the spring renovation of the tennis court.
Great, thanks, Joe.
You got it.
Um, okay, next, um, a tax payment due, uh, the tax, uh, tax bills go out, uh, next month. Uh, or the, uh, the end, uh, just before Labor, uh, Memorial Day. And, um, the state will be setting guidelines, um, about what we can, uh, do in regard to, um, tax payments. So we'll have to, again, wait for the, uh, guidance from them until we, until we get that. So they're in the process of doing that now. The county has a, uh, group of people that are, uh, working together to provide, uh, uh, guidance. There are some village mayors on the committee, uh, some town supervisors. And they're putting together, uh, their suggestions and they're gonna send them to the state. And that should be done, uh, by the, um, end of this week. So hopefully, uh, uh, the state will get that and then we'll have some guidance about what we can do or can't do. Any questions on that tax payments? Um, election process, um, I know I told, uh, Joe and Steve and it's on our website, but, uh, the governor has issued an executive order that moves the June 16th, 2020 elections to September 15th, 2020. Currently, the collection of names on nominated petition, petitions continues to be suspended. New York State will provide villages with further guidance about nominated petitions. As soon as we, uh, we receive that guidance, uh, I'll share it with everyone. What they're doing with the school districts, um, the school districts, I believe, are voting, uh, June 9th. And they have to send absentee ballots to everyone in the district with a stamp, uh, return envelope, so they can vote and put it in the envelope and send it back. And for school districts, there'll be no, um, petitions. Anyone who wants to, uh, run for the board, we just, uh, I don't know what the procedure is, but they, uh, basically just have to, uh, let the district know that they, uh, of their, um, uh, willingness and, um, um, desire to run for the school board. So once we get guidance on nominating positions for the village elections, I will, uh, let you know.
Right?
Yeah.
Uh, yeah, I'm sorry, excuse me. Has there been any guidance or discussion about one-time village registration?
Uh, no, um, you mean, uh, well, everyone, people who are currently, uh, Suffolk County, uh, you know, uh, Suffolk County residents, they're registered to vote in, um, at, uh, the, um, YAPHAN, uh, election.
I don't mean that. I mean, the, you know, the, uh, village hall, uh, taxpayer, non-Suffolk County registered.
Right, right. We will have to, uh, we'll have to set, um, of course, that date was set for, um,
Early June.
Early June. And my recommendation to John, uh, was, uh, as I thought about, you know, you could take, uh, the, we had 90 people register last year. You just automatically say that they're registered and then, do something that, uh, would be less, um, there wouldn't be as many people coming to village hall to register. So I don't know what we'll do, uh, they, you know, the state may just say, if you're, if you're, if you're approved, you're a resident, you can vote. Um, so I don't know exactly what to do, uh, but I'll ask that question when we, and when we get down to, uh, them, uh, providing a further guidance.
Yes, please.
And it said, um, the state will also provide fur, further guidance about the process to be used to vote. Uh, whether, I don't know whether they're hoping that changing the election to September 15th, we can do a, a normal vote where people come into, uh, the community center and vote? Or will we follow, uh, the same, uh, guidance that they gave school districts? Where we will have to provide, um, on, uh, you know, envelope, mail, uh, the absentee ballot out and provide, uh, uh, envelopes for them to, a stamped envelope for them to send it back. So we'll just have to wait and see what that process will, uh, how that process will work. It'll be very interesting to see how the school districts, how it works in the school districts. I think it's gonna be, um, very difficult. And I would think that it would take, it's gonna take two or three days to count all the votes. I mean, uh, I don't know how many votes the school district gets, but, um, in South Country School District, there must be, um, there could be 15,000 votes, uh, so, um, that could go on for a while. And so it may take a couple of days to get the election results. Current, uh, further guidance in the state, current elected officials, we will remain in office until the rescheduled election is held, uh, September 15th, 2020. So Joe, you and Steve will, will remain in office. And, uh, af, after the, uh, the election, the winners of the election, um, they will, um, uh, take office after the re, results of the elections are certified. And remember, the, uh, election results are certified at a board meeting. So if this, if, uh, we're voting September 15th, so it'll probably be the, um, uh, September business meeting that, um, uh, the election results will be certified. So those are the, uh, that's the election. Do you have any questions?
Yeah, I'm looking forward to it. I'm ready to go. So I can't wait till September 15th. Let's get it on. I'm ready. Anxious and can't wait.
Very good. Okay, uh, John, um, the minutes of the, uh, April 20th board meeting?
Yes, Mayor Fell, in your package, you'll find, um, the draft minutes for your review. I'd like to know if you have any input because we will see these, uh, for approval at our next, um, business meeting.
Okay. So if, uh, board members, if, uh, if you, if you've looked at them and you have any, uh, uh, questions or changes, let John know, uh, over the next couple of days.
Thank you.
The FEMA, uh, main dock project, John, you want to give us an update?
Yes, um, we, the, the project is moving ahead. We have our Monday, uh, meetings. We had one this morning. Trustee Farino is, uh, the liaison. The major challenge, there are actually two major challenges right now. We, it's been raining, um, almost every day for the last week and a half. And that's impeding their work. Uh, they finished, uh, most of the above groundwork. Uh, the bulkhead is, uh, 92% complete. Now they're working on the drainage system. And you can imagine, uh, it was explained to me, which I really wasn't aware, but, uh, every other week, uh, the high tide takes place during the day and then the low tide takes place at night. So, um, given that alternating cycle, one week is good, one week isn't. The week that it was good for us actually was to be last week. But you'll recall, there was a significant rainfall. In addition, um, a, as we know, we're putting in this water treatment down at the main dock because we have a major outflow of, uh, the main artery of our stormwater drain system that goes way up into the village, even beyond, uh, Main Street. The waters come down, um, Bellport Lane. And because of this and the tide and the water table, um, last week, they worked very hard to control the water and de-watering so they could work under the surface with the water treatment and the stormwater drains, but they couldn't make any headway. The other challenge, of course, um, for, uh, for weeks, uh, they, they did not have a challenge with COVID. Unfortunately, uh, within the last couple of weeks, um, three of their crew members, uh, needed to go on, you know, under quarantine, which also, you know, they are practicing social distancing on the job, so that has impacted a bit. We are beyond our due date, but of course there are extenuating circumstances, um, e- especially now with COVID. So, um, you know, we're hoping to certainly open as soon as possible. As I said, I speak, um, often during the week to our waterfront engineer and also to the contractor to understand status. They know, um, you know, that we need to open as quickly as possible. But, uh, it has not, uh, lately, uh, everything was going quite well until, um, la, last week. And, uh, this week, uh, it was explained to me further. I, I didn't, I didn't get into specifics about the water. If it rains, um, the waters continue to come down our drainage system for maybe three days. So you can imagine, it's been raining every day, sometimes at night. So, um, they, they've started de-watering. Uh, they're taking a new tactic now in, uh, placing, uh, steel, steel staving, uh, to what they say is correct, uh, connect and make a coffer dam so that the coffer dam can, uh, be de-watered. And then they can do, continue their work on the water treatment plant, the hydrodynamic separator.
John, you want to mention to everyone about Bob Terry offering to partially let people in? And your thoughts on that?
Yeah, well, uh, he did mention that very briefly, but when we spoke about it further, we, we really don't have that, um, that option because of logistics, uh, what they're doing, et cetera. So, um, we, we won't, we will not be, um, looking to, uh, partially open until we're, we're, we fully can. And I, I believe we're gonna turn that corner where we can open, where they will finish. Of course, their project, it, it, you know, for this, this portion of the project, uh, is the resurfacing. And, uh, we want, we will, we can't utilize our marina until the resurfacing takes place.
Great, thank you.
Any other questions?
Good, thank you, John.
Yeah, I think Mayor Fell, the next process, the next topic we discussed quite a bit already.
Yeah, yeah. Uh, again, uh, we have, um, all special events listed, May, uh, art show 19th to 26th, um, Memorial Day parade probably canceled, uh, marina opening, May 16th. We have to come up with some, uh, some method of, um, car stickers, John. I don't know how we're gonna do that, but.
Yeah, yes, that's correct, yes.
And then Ho-Hum opening, May 23rd. I think, um, maybe, should we get the golf, should we get the waterfront commission to, um, see if they meet? And they can begin to, um, develop guidelines for all these things, the opening of the.
Yes, Mayor Fell, later this week, we hope to connect with the waterfront commission for their involvement and, um, their input.
Okay, great. June events, voter registration day, June 6th, of course, that's canceled. Uh, Crewe's D, Picnic's, June 8th, 9th, 10th, 22nd, of course, that's canceled. Fire, uh, coach, uh, coach, car show had been canceled, June 28th. They're gonna reschedule in, in the fall. And beach to be open on Saturdays and Sundays, uh, to be determined. We'll make that decision, uh, once we get the guidance from the state. July event, beach opens full time. Again, we'll wait for guidance from the state, Artist on the Lane, July 4th. As of right now, it's still on, but I, I, we'll have to get ahold of, um, the, um, company that, uh, the group that, uh, uh, runs the Artist on the Lane and, uh, have a discussion with them. It's camp, again, I've been in touch with John, um, and, uh, he, um, beginning to look at options and, um, we'll, we'll know in about, I, I think we'll know in about another week and a half, uh, whether that's gonna move forward. Bellport Day, I talked to, um, uh, Luanne Thompson and she's, they're going to cancel Bellport Day on the 25th and try to reschedule for the, uh, later in the fall. Uh, South Country Education Foundation, July 11th, we'll contact them. I'm sure that, um, that will not be something that goes on. And the Friday night content, concerts through Labor Day, um, again, we'll make a decision on that as we move, uh, further down, uh, get closer to the end of, uh, May. Okay, any questions?
No.
Okay, John, you want to do Pam and Brian Hannon?
Yes, yes, thank you, Mayor Fell. We have two guests, um, with us, uh, this evening. Bellport residents, Brian Hannon and Pam Hannon, and they're going to be, um, admitted to our meeting now.
You want to give an overview of what, what the situation is, Johnson, we'll know about it?
Yes, thank you. We, we heard earlier, we have two grants, ADA grants. I'd like to just wait and be sure that the Hannans are on.
Okay, great.
I need to sign off, but I'm going to try to come back on in a little bit.
Thank you, Ally.
Good night, everyone. Thank you.
The Hannans are joining us. It's just going to be momentary. Brian, are you there?
I am.
Oh, great. Is Pam with us?
Yes.
I'm here.
Great, thank you so much for joining us. As Mayor Fell said, I'd like to give a brief overview. We received in 2018, as we heard earlier, a grant, a HUD grant through Brookhaven Township and through our senior program for an ADA ramp, replacing the ramp that's existing adjacent to our community center on the east side. In addition, we received a grant for Village Hall to create an ADA compliant ramp. The ramp at the community center is unstable now, unfortunately. And as I, it's not an ADA compliant ramp, so we're very thankful that we do have the funding for this. You may recall that we had the design, we went to bid. You heard earlier that the funding was $33,000 in change. Yeah, $33,400. Our bids came back, there were two bids at 160,000 and 184,000. We went back to the drawing board with our engineer and asked to, if we could, through forced labor, where we would only, you know, be paying for the materials. And we went through that process. Our neighbor, our neighbors to the east, the Hannans, have had an issue with its being replaced where it is now. Do, I, I think, and I'm going to, we're going to certainly hear from them also. Two issues, the biggest issues are security and the fact that we are widening the ramp because what's presently there is not ADA compliant. In order to become ADA compliant, we must widen. And the Hannans have suggested that rather than place the, the ramp somewhat where it is now, only further back to place it on the west side of the building. Brian had very quickly today, as a matter of fact, put together a rendering. Did you all receive that rendering? I emailed you.
Oh, yes, yes, I have it.
Yes.
Okay, very good. I'm glad, that's good. And now, you know, I think it's important, and, and Brian and Pam had asked to meet with the board to discuss their concerns. So I'd like to hand it over to Brian and Pam.
John, can you see me? Can you see Pam and I?
No, we can hear you, though.
Let me just see if I can find the, the video on this.
Yeah, there's a little symbol. It looks like.
You got it.
You're on, that's great, that's great.
Okay. Thank you, John, for.
You look good, you look very good.
Thank you.
You do too. I'm hoping everybody is healthy, staying healthy, yeah.
This is very peculiar to have to meet this way.
Right.
But anyhow, we appreciate you taking the time and allow us to be a part of the work session tonight. Pam and I have never liked the ramp on this side of the building, that this is our property. It's always been a security issue with us. I've chased kids away from the ramp. I've chased kids off the back shed roof who were smoking or doing other stuff. We've had people urinate on the side of the building where the door is and where the ramp is. We've had the football team at one time, many years ago, broke into the community center. So Pam and I live close to the community center. We, we don't have a problem with the community center. We just have a problem with the ramp and the security aspect because we're always out there chasing people away or, or at least curious as to why they're hanging out. And we just feel that this is a great opportunity for us to move the ramp to the west side of the building. And John has supplied us with the plans. I've looked over the plans. It seems to be the same kind of construction as what's there now. It seems to be all timber. I also looked at the site plan. And if you flip, if you flip this construction and reverse it and put it on the other side of the building, it will fit. I don't know if you've got my sketch, John, that I did.
Yes, yes, I, I asked earlier, Brian, I don't know if you were on and you heard, but you had put together a rendering which shows the west side of the building, the west end with the ramp in two positions. And I asked the board if they had received the email and they did.
Well, the first position isn't really, I think, the best solution, although it probably could work if we moved the air conditioning ducts or whatever those are, the vents. But I think the second one works because if you flip the design from one side of the building to the other.
Damn.
It sits back. If, if you look at the site plan, the back of the end of the steps there would be right at the back of the building. And in fact, the ramp comes out, so it clears the air conditioning.
Yes, I did see that, yes.
So I think it works, I think it works well. And plus, the security aspect of it really works in all of our favor because Code can very clearly what's going on in that part of the yard, that part of the property. Where, where the, the ramp is now, it's really not a good spot for it. You can't see back there at all. And like I said before, I'm back there all the time. I'm out, I'm across the street all the time chasing kids off the gazebo. Pam and I do spend a lot of time making sure that the village property is not.
Abused.
And compromised in any way. And I, it would be unfortunate for somebody to be doing drugs back there or get hurt in some way back there. I, I think it really would be a better solution to move it to the other side of the property. You have the space, you have the room. I don't know what would prevent you from moving it over to that side. And this seems like the perfect opportunity to move it now that there's going to be reconstruction of the, of the ramp. I also feel, I'll just make this comment, that it is in the historic district. Pam and I were made aware that there were going to be some changes here, but I really do feel that the historic commission really should have some sort of opportunity to look at this. It is part of the historic district. And it, you know, it doesn't send a very good message out to the residents that the village is not concerned about the historic quality of their building.
Brian, I take offense to that because we have always.
Who said that?
We have always done that. We've always met with, with you and provided information. That thing, that, that ramp has been there for a long time.
Ray, that ramp was there.
I think, I think it looks better over on the other side than it does for the historic district. I think it's better on the other side than where, where you are asking to have it.
Right, Ray, in all, in all fairness, I do appreciate you extending out to the historic district. You have done a very good job there. I just feel that this ramp is being attached to an historic building. And other than the fact that, you know, I'm the chairman of the board, things are going to happen over there and people are going to come to me and say, well, what's going on? How come we weren't brought into this? I have residents that come up to me all the time, you know that, Ray, I've told you that, you know, why, why is this going on? Why is that going on? And we'll, we'll not know about it. That was the past. Recently, you've been very good about including the historic commission. And I'm just wondering why we wouldn't get included in this.
But we're not, we're not constructing, we're just reconstructing what's there.
But I'll digress from that because we feel that obviously the ramp has to go in. There needs to be a ramp there. We just feel it would be better served in another part of the building on the other side.
Around the back of the, of the community center on the side where you constructed it, kids can still get back there, yes?
I'm, Ray, that's a, that's a fact, that's a fact.
No matter where the ramp is, kids are going to get back there.
That's true, but the visibility factor will be much better for Code on this side of the building.
Not if they're running back in the building.
Well, in the back of the building, I guess Code would have to get out and walk around anyhow.
They would have to do that, yes.
But where, where it currently is, and it's probably been there for at least 30 years, maybe even longer. There is, there is no visibility. And, you know, this is something that Brian and I can speak to because we live here. And it is a concern. I know that you are aware that our house was broken into. We had properties stolen.
I'm really, I'm not, I'm really not aware of that, Pam. When was it broken into?
About 10 years ago, they took the front door of our house off. They ransacked the house, they stole.
I was not aware of that.
So, you know, security is a huge issue for us. It is huge.
Pam, my house was broken into 15 years ago.
No, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Well, I, I, I'm sure a lot of homes in the village have been broken into.
Right.
Because of where this is, you don't live here, so you don't see it. You're not aware of it.
Absolutely.
I can tell you, during the summer, if Brian and I are sitting on our porch, we see the parade of kids going down. I clearly remember the one time that Brian watched these young men relieving themselves on the side of the building and Brian walking over and announcing to the guys, do you know, my wife just saw you relieving yourself? I mean, this sort of thing happens, but they're not visible because the ramp is there. Kids go skateboarding on there. And now, you know, it isn't even being built in kind. You are widening the footprint of this ramp.
Pam, stop, Pam, stop. We're not doing that. We have to follow the code that the, so we're not doing that. We're just following the code that we have to follow when we place the ramp.
I understand it and I appreciate that. But it's not being built in kind, it is being widened. You're not doing it, the ADA is requiring this, I understand that. And if I had a disability, I would want it to be done that way also. But if it was on the other side, it would be more visible. It would be visible for everybody who's in the village hall. You could see the ramp, even though kids could still congregate on the south side of the community center. There's more of, of an opportunity for it to be more visible for the authority to maintain it.
Brian, Pam, I don't mean to interrupt, but Brian, isn't the very fact that it becomes more visible, a direct contradiction of the charge of the historic district to maintain the historic streetscapes of Bellport and keeping it on the side less visible? Isn't it in fact better from a historic standpoint?
Well, I can, I can address that because it would give you the opportunity to do plantings around it or near it that would help to soften it. And that would reduce the, the sight of it, the, the, the structure itself. So that would soften it, I think, by able, you'd be able to put more plantings there where here and now you can't put plantings.
But here, but here, it's, it's kind of, by your own admission, it's already kind of hidden. It's already kind of left to the side.
Which, yes.
And it's a problem for us too, to maintain, you say, we should send it his, to historic. My history with historic is going to say, build it where it was because you're changing the streetscape. So I, and, and I've had conversations with the mayor where this was discussed. I mean, I appreciate everything that you're saying from a safety standpoint, and we could probably do some things as a municipality with dress safety, whether it be vis a vis a camera or some fencing or some other thing when the building's not open. But at the end of the day, you know, by, by wanting it more visible is direct contradiction to your other request that it should go to historic.
But Dave, it is going to be more visible because it is going to be wider. No matter, at the end of the day, it is not the same project. It is wider. Not only that, it is like, if, it would be more visible for somebody who is in need of the ramp, they would be able to see it. And another thing that I'm sure you have not taken into consideration, but certainly Brian and I have, most recently this weekend, we were doing cleanup and we had to clean out leaves and we had to go on the community center's side to remove leaves. Will, there will be no access to get by when the ramp is extended. It will not be able to be maintained to keep the litter removed and it occurs all the time.
Because it's being widened, it's, it, it only allows you two feet from the edge of that ramp to the chain link fence.
To the chain link fence. I mean, you have to be a pretty thin person to get by there and to do any, I mean, I'm not huge, but I would struggle to take a rake to try to clean out there. And I'm thinking about it because when the trash is dumped or let go by the community center, invariably it blows over into our yard and we're constantly cleaning it up. That happens everywhere when trash is just tossed away.
Can I ask you a question about your ramp? I see you have stairs on the north side and the ramp on the south side. Can that be reversed with the ramp is on the south side and stairs are on the north side?
Ray, yeah, I'm not an engineer, but.
Well, I mean, the, if you're a handicapped person, you're going to have to come all the way around.
No, 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 don't go by the first one, Ray, go by the second one.
Where's the second one? I didn't get to.
There's two PDFs.
I only got one.
I, I, I think they both went out. I just forwarded them. I don't know why, you may not have received it.
Yeah, I didn't get them either.
I can send it to you if you'd like. But I can send it to you in the morning and I can do a better rendition of that. But the second one has its, if you look at it, if you look at the site plan, I don't know if you, you, if your gentleman had the site plan in front of you.
They did, I sent that also, Brian, yes.
So if you look at the site plan, you just take this, the, the ramp, move it to the other side of the building, I've already measured it off, and it fits right. It'll start from about where the window is, where the door is. And it will go just, and it'll go past that to the back end of the building. If you flip it, and you can do that by just taking a piece of paper and just taking a pen and.
No, you can do that, I can't do that.
I can't either.
But I mean, it fits back there and, and the ramp works too. It really works well around the air conditioners, you don't have.
Okay, did any, any board members have any other questions they'd like to ask Pam or Brian?
No, thank you.
Bob?
No, I'm sorry, thank you.
Steve?
Oh, thank you.
Joe? Joe?
Yes?
You have any questions you'd like to ask?
No, I, I, I understand that completely.
Okay, great. Okay.
I want to just thank on such short notice, Brian, Pam, that we, you know, we had this meeting this evening because we spoke late last week. And again, we appreciate your time in explaining your feelings and your point of view. Thank you.
Thank you also for giving us this opportunity, make it happen. Appreciate it.
Great, thanks, Pam, thanks.
Thank you, stay safe.
Yeah, you too.
Thanks, good night.
Okay, what is, what is the next thing, John?
Yep, there's nothing else from the board during the regular meeting. I had sent along to you a executive session. I sent along the telephone, for a telephone conference. It'll just take me a moment to set it up once we get off of this system. Because as you know, we're live streaming now and we'll just end this meeting and then we'll go into executive session on the telephone for teleconference. Thank you for your patience.
Okay, thanks, John.